Welcome, everyone. Good evening. This is the December 10th, 2024, meeting of the Milford Zoning Board of Appeals. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, please. Mr. Dubois.
Here.
Mr. Enig.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Montano.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
And Ms. Veronte.
Here.
Ms. Hersh's excuse this evening. And also present tonight Stephen Harris, our zoning enforcement officer, and Maggie Green, our recording secretary. Okay, we have three agenda items tonight. I'm going to be recusing myself from item number one, so Mr. Soto, will you please chair the meeting in my absence? Yes, okay. And Mr. Dubois, will you please vote in my absence?
Of course.
Okay, great. That is for item number one. I will step out now, and it is up to you, Mr. Soto. Thank you.
Gary, could you please read the first hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Seventy-five Lafayette Street, HBP forty-four slash four-ten slash nine, SFA hyphen ten, C. Carlos owner varying section three-point-two, point-four, point-two side yard setback to six-foot-three where ten feet required to convert three-season porch to living space. Paul Stowell, five-twenty-nine twenty-four surveyed.
Okay, could you state your name and address and present your case to us?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Chris Krinos. I'm representing seventy-five Lafayette Street tonight, and I thank you all for your consideration of our application. Our application is to convert an existing enclosed porch into a living space. We are not asking to expand the existing footprint, nor are we asking to increase beyond the existing single-story in height. The property received a variance in nineteen-seventy-one to enclose this porch, so the walls and the roof have been existing on the structure since then. We're not asking to convert from an open space to an enclosed space, but rather from an enclosed space to a finished space. Since the porch is already enclosed, our plans will not change the impact of the structure on the land. The reason we're eager to convert the enclosed porch to a living space is to preserve historical aspects of the home. This property is our second project in the historic district, and we continue to aim to restore and retain as many historical aspects as possible. This house was built in eighteen-eighty-eight. It's a beautiful home. However, when we purchased it, it had been neglected for many, many years. It'd fallen into some extreme disrepair. However, still intact inside, it has a beautiful curved staircase in the front that goes up to the second floor. When we started to dig into the house, we actually found a rear staircase as well. It had been covered up. However, neither staircase is up to current building code. They're both narrow and steep and have excessively high steps. Neither is safe for moving furniture or for daily living. In order to retain the front staircase and retain the history of the house, we would like to rebuild the rear staircase to current building codes for safety and ease of use. In order to do this, to make the staircase less deep and the steps less high, the entire one needs to be extended, which lands it right inside the existing enclosed porch. If we can make that enclosed porch a living space, we'll have room for building code-compliant staircase and be able to save the historic curved front staircase in the front of the house. I do want to reiterate that the property is in significant disrepair, and much of it needs a complete rebuild, including the porch, which is why we did take it down. We were not planning to take it down at all, just winterize it if we got the variance tonight. However, upon inspection, we found many structural issues. Much of the exterior rear wall had been built with two-by-threes, and there was a rear header that went straight across the back of the porch. It was undersized, can't carry the load, per my architect, the structural guy. We went a little bit deeper, and we were able to pull up some of the floorboards to it. I found compromised footings. The mortar had given away. The whole back porch was really not structurally sound anymore. It became clear that whether this became a living space or stayed as it was purely as an enclosed porch, it would need to be resupplied and recreated, and we couldn't properly address that without taking it down. Our plan now is to rebuild the same single-story on the same footprint. It'll be the same enclosed porch if we have to, or hopefully with your approval, we'll be able to have a living space as well. Either way, the exterior impact of the structure will be the same as it was when we purchased the home, and we will move forward with all necessary documents and building permits once we know the outcome of tonight's request. We did reach out to some of our neighbors, and we did leave with you before this meeting. I believe we have five of our immediate neighbors that are in approval of our request this evening. Any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. How you doing, sir? I just want to reiterate, you did say that regardless whether you converted this porch into finished space, you would have to redo this entire porch anyway, correct?
Precisely.
Anybody else? I have a question for Stephen. Stephen, if this is a finished porch, so it's basically finished other than heat, and they had a variance in seventy-one for it, why do they need another variance?
Because they're expanding the living footprint of the house. Right now, it's a three-season porch, it's not living space, so if you convert it to living space, year-round space is now part of the house.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, through you. One more question, sir. Is there any historic issues with you doing this work that you know of?
Our intent is to build it same size, exactly like it is, so it's covered under historic.
Okay.
Mr. Harris, if you want, you can show the... There's another image I did include where you'll see the rear staircase. There's a kind of a cut-through elevation on the right side of that, where in order to have it become a staircase to code, that right image, you'll see it does protrude into the living space of the addition.
So that must have been a pretty steep staircase.
Oh, yeah, twelve-inch risers.
Wow.
Yeah. The front staircase isn't much better.
Don't walk down that one after a few drinks. All right, no more questions? All right, you can step back.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here in support of this?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to confirm that there were four signatures and an email submitted in support.
Okay. Is there anybody opposed? Okay, seeing none. Gary, can you read the motion? The public hearing is... I mean, the hearing is closed.
This is seventy-five Lafayette Street. We move to approve the request to vary section three-point-two, point-four, point-two side yard setback to six-point-three where ten-foot required to convert three-season porch to living space, surveyed by Paul Stowell, oh-five-twenty-nine twenty-four.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Commissioners? Mr. Wolf?
I'm with the motion.
We're not voting yet. Discussion on motion?
No. I saw the forums, footings, it looks appropriate. I'm okay with it.
Andrew, what do you think?
I don't see any significant problem with him finishing a porch that's already there, and he's not expanding the footprint, and it looks like he needs it to put that stairwell in. I think this is a good deal.
Anybody else? Gary?
No problem.
Okay. And I don't have any problems with this. That staircase is very dangerous. Okay, let's vote. Andrew?
With the motion.
Chris?
Same.
Gary, you're voting. Gary?
With the motion.
And Gary?
With the motion.
And I'm with the motion. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Okay, Mr. Montano, item number two.
One-oh-seven Melba Street, MBP twenty-nine fifty-eight, excuse me, five-eight-seven thirty-six, R-five, Kevin Crusaden Esquire for Gerald Jerran M. Southard. Living Trust owner varying section six-point-three, point-two, expansion of non-conforming structure four-point-one, point-four, west front stair projection of four-point-six where eight-foot permitted to build a new single-family home, surveyed by A. Flanagan on ten-thirty twenty-four.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Crusaden. My office is at three Lafayette Street here in Milford. With me tonight are my clients, the beneficial owners of the property, Craig and Jerry Southard, and also designer of the house, Joe Russo, is here to answer any questions. This request... We have two requests tonight, vary section six-point-three, point-two, expansion of a non-conforming structure, and four-point-one, point-four for a west-side front-entry stair projection, which is on the... If you see Melba Street on the map and you glance to the left, there's a stair projection going out into the front yard, but it's projecting at eight feet where four-point-six... It's projecting four-point-six where eight feet is permitted. You can see the side property line. It's looking at the side. I don't necessarily agree that these variances are necessary or required, but this is the situation that we've arrived at. The variances requested are for construction of a new single-family home. The existing house was built in nineteen-oh-four. In twenty-eighteen, you may or may not recall, some of you were on the board, there were variances granted for this house, for this property. The structure was never built, the variances were never... The approval was never recorded on the land records. The reason for that are several, but the one related to the plans was there was a granted with a condition that the property owners comply with lot coverage for the zone, which allows maximum of sixty-five percent, and I think it was Mr. Soto who had asked that that condition be put on the previous approval. The lot's very small, and it has a lot of impervious surface because it's on a beachfront wall with a... It's a seawall with abutments. There's a lot of concrete on the lot. Right now, the existing coverage is ninety-nine percent, so probably effectively a hundred percent almost. And in order to redesign the project to get it down to the lot coverage, it's actually down below sixty-five percent now, which is the max allowed. It's around sixty, sixty-one percent. The house is about two or three feet shorter than the previously approved house in twenty-eighteen, and it's shifted a little bit. You can't... We can't go any further than that. We don't need to as far as the lot coverage. So we satisfied that condition, but what happened was with the redesign of the structure, that led to the stairs being in this location as opposed to the previous location of the previous approval. And so we are here tonight primarily for the stairs, and Stephen and I went back and forth on this several times about what variances were required, and the other variance was expansion of a non-conforming structure because the existing house is a small house built in nineteen-oh-four, and this house is larger, albeit I read the plans today. I think the house is only about... Proposed house is only about seventeen feet wide. So we're asking if the board will approve this this evening based on the strong efforts made by the site plan surveyor and the clients to property owners to meet the condition of that previous variance granting. The hardships... The main hardship is the narrowness of the lot. It's only twenty-five feet wide. The original subdivision maps in the early nineteen hundreds had fifty-foot-wide lots. This is called out as half of Lot Twenty-seven on a map from, you know, nineteen-hundred, and the lot is about twenty or twenty-one percent too small for the zone. We also have... We're in a position where we have to... I mean, we have to keep it away from the waterfront if possible. We still have to go for a CAM application, and if we're within twenty-five feet of the mean-high watermark, we'll have to... That'll be a special permit hearing as well. But we have... And if you look at the waterfront side, that is all seawall there, so they couldn't meet the lot coverage under the previous plan without redesigning the house, making it a little bit smaller, and then that's where the stairs landed because it's an elevated structure. So this is where we're at. I don't have any... I do have... I don't know if you want me to mention those map during public comment, but I have five letters from neighbors that are in support of the project. I can tell you who they are. I don't know if you want me to read that now, Madam Chair, or wait for the public comment section.
Thank you.
Attorney Crusaden, can you repeat your opening remarks?
Yes.
I was trying to get on my Wi-Fi on my iPad, but...
Oh, sure.
I missed the part where you said something I asked... I mentioned something.
You might remember. So this board granted variances for a previous version of this project where the house was actually longer than it is now, and they were all related to the side yard on each side, basically, because the lot's so narrow. So you had... We were... The current coverage is ninety-nine percent. Under that scenario, we were getting it down to seventy-nine percent, but you had brought up, and I think amended the motion to make it a condition of approval, that you would grant the variances as long as we can meet the maximum allowed lot coverage, which was sixty... Which is sixty-five percent still today. And so they did that, made the house a little bit smaller, removed some of the pavement that they could. They got it down below sixty-five percent, but that drove the redesign and the stairs being in a different location. So that's where we're at.
Thanks a lot.
Sure.
Thank you. Can you reiterate? I'm sorry. You had said something earlier about the size of the proposed house versus the existing house, not the lot coverage, but the size of the house, and I'm seeing that that garage is remaining detached in the front, right?
The garage is going to be replaced with the same footprint garage.
So you had said we now need an increase... An expansion of the non-conforming structure, but the lot coverage is going down? Excuse me.
Sure.
And the proposed house is going to be bigger or smaller than existing?
It's... So I didn't want to... I wasn't clear enough. The proposed house is going to be bigger than the existing house, but it's smaller than the one that was previously approved by this board.
Okay. And the lot coverage is coming down because we're removing some concrete impervious surfaces?
Well, the house is, I think, three feet shorter, which enables us to make less lot coverage that way, and then there was some other adjustments made by the site plan to remove other impervious surface. I guess my part of the conversation was because of the concrete wall on the front, and it's basically almost like a concrete patio plus a seawall with the abutments, we couldn't... We were limited to... We had to make the house smaller. They couldn't pull it back because that wall, it would still remain concrete. It wouldn't solve your lot coverage problem in that way.
Okay.
Well, you've removed a lot of asphalt. The driveways are all going to be gravel now, and I see you removed a lot.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone speaking in favor of this application?
I have five letters. I can just read the names and addresses that they're in support of it from neighbors?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, so this is from Jim and Debbie Spade at one-oh-five Melba Street. They are in favor of the project, and I'll submit these for the record. Victoria Sacandi and Albert Sacandi, neighbors, I believe they're directly next door or close by one-oh-one Melba Street. They're in favor of the project. The neighbors at one-thirteen Melba Street, Plinio Perez and Vivian G. Perez are in favor of the project. This is from another neighbor. I'm not sure of the address. It's Mrs. Margaret. I think it's Boyle or Coyle. Looks like Coyle, and she's writing in favor of the project. And an email from Mary and Mike King at one-oh-eight Melba Street stating that they're in favor of the project and the variance.
Thank you. Is there anyone opposed to this application? Any additional questions? Okay, this hearing is closed. Mr. Soto?
One-oh-seven Melba Street. I move to approve the request to vary section six-point-three, point-two, expansion of non-conforming structure, four-point-one, point-four, west front stair projection of four-point-six feet where eight feet permitted to build a new single-family home, surveyed by A. Flanagan, ten-thirty twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. So this came before us previously. We granted the variance requests with the condition that the lot coverage come down. Sixty-five percent is max allowed. We're at sixty-point-two with this proposal. I know that was a big deal for us at the time. It's still a big deal for me. I really like that compliance. I think a stair projection... A projection is a fine trade-off for decreased lot coverage, in my opinion. Yes?
Yeah, I agree the same. I don't have any problem with this. They brought it down to sixty-five, and I'm happy with this.
Below even.
Oh, is it below?
Yeah, sixty-point-two.
Oh, really? The survey says sixty-five.
Oh, um, max... I'm looking at max sixty-five, existing ninety-nine, proposed sixty-point-two.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay.
Mr. King?
Even better.
Through you, Madam Chair. I was just looking at the map, too, and this lot has one of the smaller lots on Melba Street. There's only two lots that are not... That are smaller in width on the street, so I think the fact that they've lowered the lot coverage is a good move, and this looks like a good project.
Wonderful. Any other thoughts? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Mr. King?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Montano?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. The motion passes. Item number three, Mr. Montana.
Excuse me. Twenty-four Bayshore Drive, MBP twenty-nine slash five-eight-five slash five, R-five, Thomas Lynch Esquire for Frank Delito III, owner, varying section three-point-one, point-four, point-one, west side yard setback to five-point-two where ten-foot required. Four-point-one, point-four, west projection to two-point-five where eight feet permitted. East projection, two-point-four where four feet permitted to build new single-family home, surveyed by Jay Kodeskoti, revised eleven-twelve twenty-four.
Thank you, and Madam Chair, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm Lynch, Trimby, and Boynton, and my office is located here in Milford at sixty-three Cherry Street, and I have the pleasure tonight of appearing with my clients Frank Delito III, who is the owner of the property at twenty-four Bayshore. He's here with me tonight along with his dad, Frank Delito Jr. The Delitos have been clients of mine for many, many years, and I'm happy to present this application on their behalf to receive variance approvals for the construction of a beautiful new home that Jim Deno has designed, their architect. Jim is here with me as well to answer any questions during the course of our presentation to you. So quite simply, we're before you with an application for a west-side variance from the ten feet required in the R-five zone to five-point-two that's provided. The setback on the other side is a conforming five-point-one setback. The existing house had a setback of three-point-one feet, so that was non-conforming. So one of the points I want to make at the start as we go through the site plan and then onto the floor plans and the elevations is the fact that we are seeking a variance to diminish the setback on the west side, but we have shifted the foundation of the new house over so that there is now a conforming setback on the east side. So just a little bit of background, the clients have owned the property since two-thousand-and-nine. As we all know, it's located in the Bayview section of Milford. It's just shy of the Title Marsh River and the bridge that comes across of Melba Street. The houses on the west side of that are located and have addresses of Bayshore Drive. The current house where Frank III has been residing is just a very small bungalow. It's some eight-hundred square feet, consisting of one bedroom and five rooms. Frank Jr. and his wife Donna reside in Orange, so the proposal here is to build a new house. Jim has designed an in-law setup. Jim has designed an in-law setup within the confines of the house, as I'll mention when we go through the floor plans, he went over those with Stephen, they do conform to our minimum of, or maximum of 800 square feet for an in-law setup within a house. So the, the plan here is for the two families to be residing in this house together. The plans have been put together by Jim, they're up on the website, we had them submitted to you before the hearing. The new home will be some 4,300 square feet in gross living area. I will mention that I appeared before you back in 2021 on behalf of John and Lisa Lombard, who owned the property at 28 Bay Shore. If you've driven down to look at the site, the Lombards' house is now currently under construction, and it's basically the same sized house. Jim Dano also prepared the plans for the Lombards', and he also prepared the plans, and we appeared before you, I think it was back in 2015, for Gina Battalamenti and her husband Fred, for the house on the other side. So basically, I've appeared before you now three times on three different houses, they've all been designed by Jim Dano, and they're all basically the same size. So they have a uniform setback in the rear so that nobody's infringing on the east or west water views or the other, they've been designed that way, and they've all basically acted in concert as it relates to that. The lot is very narrow, it's a 40-foot wide lot, some of the, some of the lots in Bayview are wider than this, there's, I mean narrower than this, they're maybe 30 feet, but this is a 40-foot non-conforming lot, so the hardship that we present to you with an application such as this, as we have done with other applications, is that the side yard setbacks are required for a reasonably sized house. This house on a 40-foot lot is 24 feet wide, so that the setbacks that are provided, as I said, on the west side, it's, it's a diminishment of the current 14-foot setback, but on the east side, we've actually increased the setback from three feet to five feet. The property is located in FEMA Zone VE13, the first floor level will be 15 feet in accordance with the VE13 requirements. This house is going to be raised, certainly right now, the existing bungalow is, is at a location now and a height where it's in a flood hazard area, so that the property is going to be, the new house will be raised and the first floor living area, 15 feet, will be compliant with the VE zone. I'm going to ask Stephen, just to scroll through the floor plan so we can see the layout of the house, but it's, it's going to be your typical beach style, the first level will be the garage with the first level of the elevator that's going to be constructed, the second level of the house, or the main level, is going to have a master bedroom, a guest bedroom, a kitchen, a great room going out to a deck. The second level above that, the, the second actual living level, is the level that'll have the sort of in-law setup, referring to it as, as an in-law. It's going to have the stairway coming up from the first floor with a foyer, and then down the hallway on the west side of the house, there will be a doorway that will separate the master bedroom and walk-in closet, Stephen is scrolling it right now with his cursor, that area is going to be the in-law area for Frank and Donna Delito. It's going to have a kitchen with a great room, a master bedroom, a walk-in closet, and a master bath, and each level of the house is going to have a deck off to the rear, okay? And then lastly, the third level above that is going to be a storage area, it's going to have mechanicals, and there are going to be two in-home offices consisting of some 300 square feet each, so there'll be a total of 800 square feet for the office, I'm, I'm sorry, 300 square feet, 338 square feet is the total of the two offices, I stand corrected, and I apologize, 338 square feet is the only area on the top level that'll be finished off for the two home offices. So just to summarize, as I said, the hardship lies in the, the narrow nature of the lot, a rather minimal change from the existing non-conforming setbacks, it is a very deep lot, it's 250, 234 feet deep wide, the lot itself is conforming as it relates to square footage, but it is not conforming as to the width. In the R5 zone, you're required to have a building lot that's 50 feet wide, and this lot is only 40 feet wide, so there lies the hardship. Otherwise, your building and lot coverage have been zoning, are zoning compliant, the elevations that we've submitted to you, I will say that we've had further discussions since we submitted them with Stephen about the roof line and the calculation of the 35-foot midpoint, there is going to be a revision after a meeting that we had with Stephen last week to one of the front peaks so that the height of the building will be zoning compliant, all right? Stephen had made some calculation based upon the, the current roof design, so the roof design is going to be changed so that, and Stephen can elaborate on it, but we had a meeting with him, he's, he's been satisfied with the design change that, that Jim is going to make. The plans do have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board for Coastal Area Management approval, so there'll be another set of eyes on these plans by the City Administrative Reviews, but based upon the hardship, as I've claimed to you, I think this is a reasonable request, and as I said, this house is in conformity with the other three homes that were built adjacent to it, and it's really been part, or this will be part of the, the renovation of that area of Bayview, some just beautiful homes that have been built down there, so. That's the extent of my presentation to you, and if you have any questions, happy to answer them, and as I said, Jim Dano is here with me as well.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Soto.
Okay, Attorney Lynch, I have a few questions for you. My biggest thing when I first saw it was the height, so what's he doing to, to lower the height? To me, it looks like he needs a height variance.
Yeah, it doesn't. You, the plans that you're seeing are just for us submitting an elevation, those are going to be amended. The, the purpose of our application to you is for the side yard and the projection, the roof line is being redesigned by Jim, and as Stephen can elaborate.
Yeah, the, the elevations that you see on the progress plan aren't just for presentation purposes, they're not final. Just to give you an idea, a visual idea of what the house will look like.
Yeah, there, there's absolutely no question, we are going to make the house zoning compliant as to the height.
Okay. And my other question to you is, on the front wall above the garage, you have those balconies.
There's going to be a balcony, right.
There's a balcony on the east and west side.
Correct.
But nowhere on the plan does it tell me the projection of those balconies, it gives me the widths on them, it doesn't give me the projections.
It's been calculated, I thought that Stephen had it calculated on our, on our.
I looked on the plan, I didn't see any measurements for those.
You see what?
The east and west balconies in the front over the garage.
It's right here, it's hard to see, I have to zoom in.
It's a 24-inch projection.
Okay, so my question is, why do they have to be that wide? Why can't they be, the doors replaced with windows, or the little tiny, you know how they put those wrought iron things that stick out a foot or so, and then you wouldn't?
I think just for the aesthetics and carrying.
I know, but to me, they look like.
The deadlines.
They look like a couple of years, and they would reduce the, wouldn't they reduce the variance you needed?
It would, but it's, it's not really a, a variance that's really infringing on anything, because again, it's a second floor, it's not like it's ground level.
I understand, but if, if I was a neighbor on the side, sides of the house, I don't think I'd want somebody, you know, front and back is okay, but on the side, sitting out there.
I will submit that both neighbors have reviewed the plans, the Lombards have done a letter, and we submitted it to the office, and it is part of our presentation to you. Gina Battalamenti on the other side reviewed the plans, and she has no problem with it either. So both neighbor, I can represent to you that both neighbors were in favor of the plans.
And you're saying those balconies are only 24 inches?
Projection, correct.
Okay.
They stick out beyond the roof projection, so I think they.
It's up, it's up on the screen now.
Yeah, I have it on my iPad. What is the roof projection sticking out?
I, I just spoke to the architect, he said that he can bring that down to 18 inches.
Okay, so it wouldn't stick out, I'd like to see him.
It probably, it probably would be flush with the, with the roof projection.
And are you putting gutters on it?
Gutters?
Yes.
No need?
Stephen, don't we have to calculate in for gutters?
If you got a setback, if you got a variance, a setback variance, the associated projection usually customarily goes along with it.
But the architect, Jim's saying that there's no need, he's not going to have gutters on the, on there.
Well, I think engineering will differ with that.
That would come up in the cam, right.
They now want gutters, and they want drywells and everything put in for those, or galleys and whatever you put.
Yeah, engineering standards aren't, aren't really the purview of the, of the ZBA.
No, but I'm just saying it would put gutters on the house, and aren't they included in the projection?
The customary projections off the roof go with a side yard setback, or a front yard setback, or a rear setback.
But on previous variances that we have approved, they've included, they always had the gutter in there. I know one guy came back, one guy came back to us because he didn't include the gutters, and we had to approve the gutters.
Some applicants have submitted that over the years, Warren Field for one, but it's not really, customary, it's, if one has the customary roof projections, it's not, it's, it goes along with the, the regular setback.
Can we have Jim address Bill's question?
Sure.
Just state your name for the record.
Jim Dano, 93 Si Si Court, I'm the designer of this project. If the engineer says we have to have gutters, it will be to the 18-inch to that gutter line, okay? It won't project further than that.
Okay.
18 inches are max, but we didn't have to do that on the house next door, Wassmer did the engineering, and we were okay with the ground conditions the way they were, you know, you, you're a builder, and that was sufficient for him, we didn't have to put in drainage.
Okay, and you'll make those two balconies to conform to the roof projection?
If it becomes a problem, and they're, they're not, it's not meant for them to go out there and sit out there. Okay? It's, it's more for effect, open the doors and maybe go out there, but not to sit.
But for the purpose of this application, you have to have it so that if, if, if you're reducing the projection so they only need 18, that they need to make that as part of their approval.
It will only be 18, yeah, if that's what you.
Okay, so from 24 proposed to 18?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, is there, rather than saying 18 inches, can we just say that they're going to be flush with the roof line?
I think that's exactly what it'll be, right.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm saying, you know, rather than saying 18 inches and have 18 inches be surpassing the roof line, can't we just say it has to be flush with the roof line?
I'd rather keep 18, because what if they build a bigger roof overhang?
Okay.
I think we want to, we want to put our.
Put a measurement on it.
I, I, I see the intent of your question, but I think effectively it'll end up the same thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Wolf, did you have a question?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? No, okay. Is there anyone speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone opposed to this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and, and we'll hear your statement.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sharon Jocelyn, I live at 7 Warren Street, Milford, Connecticut, Bayview resident, and member of the Bayview Improvement Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and three other board members from the Bayview Improvement Association Board, and that is Brian Byrne, and Teresa Serico, and Laura Hanifin, and they asked me to speak tonight about our concerns. I've lived in Bayview for 30 years, and I am very concerned and object to allowing modifications to a setback. I used to have a view of the water from my house, which is on Warren, it's off Bayshore, and now I don't, because someone allowed a porch to be built out near the water on the first house on Bayshore, and that was at 38 of Bayshore Drive, that blocked a water view, and I know that reduced my house value, as well as my enjoyment of my water. I also worry about, not only the view, view from our beach association, which we enjoy tremendously, it's everyone walking down that street, everyone having a part of the parade, we get to see the water. Now, you want me to see four feet instead of 10 feet? Because you want balcony, balconies? They obstruct the view from other houses that are high. I, I'm very concerned, I've seen what's happened to the four houses in, near my home that I can look at, and they do block our views, and that's what Bayview Improvement Association is very concerned about, not, you know, conforming to what we, we allow, and to be safe, and to make sure the beach is permanent and not eroding, we want to be sure that we all have a view, and you take two feet, you're taking a view, and I, I guess it's important for people to have balconies and stuff, but we had to build our house in modification within those rules, and I worry about that, and so therefore, I and members of the board are not in favor of the setbacks. God bless the house being built, it's beautiful, should be beautiful, but I would really like to respect, and I also am concerned that, do we not allow emergency people to have that allotment to get in for fire and to get in for access to beach rescues? I've seen that personally. If the houses are so close, we can't, they can't access, they have to come down the beach and then go down the side, that I know is critical, as I've worked in emergencies for 47 years. So I'd ask, did you want a copy of my comments, or? Nope?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to present.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Soto.
Ma'am, I have a question for you, if you'll go back to the podium. How many members are on the, the board? Okay, so four out of six are against it, okay.
It's not often my wife lets me get my two cents in. Their name is Paul Jocelyn, I live at 7 Warren Street in Milford. I've been a resident since 95, over 28 years, and in that time, I've watched the community grow and improve. Bayview has gone from a community of summer cottages with part-time residents to a community of year-round residents, and most of the changes I've seen have been good. And most of the changes I've seen have been good. I mean, the attraction is the proximity to the water and the all-important view of Long Island Sound. During my time here, I've seen a disturbing infringement on that view. Blocking, my house in particular, my wife mentioned a kitchen view, has been obstructed by a bump out from a neighbor who went, exceeded the footprint. And others I've witnessed lost entire views of Long Island Sound, costing them thousands and thousands of dollars in the value of their home, simply because we're there for the view. In the past, you could buy a property, several houses in from the water, and you could expect that at the very least, if the neighbor improved their house, they wouldn't exceed the footprint. And we relied on this organization here, the Zoning Board, to monitor that and be sure that people didn't exceed the footprint and didn't obstruct the view of people's several houses in. This variance goes beyond that. It's a very aggressive use of the property, and it's going to negatively affect many homes, not just one or two. All the way up Orland Street, people are going to lose a view simply because this proposal exceeds the footprint. As a yachting captain, I've made several trips up and down the Atlantic coast. I don't know if anybody's had that opportunity. But what once was a beautiful Atlantic coast is now full of wall-to-wall condominiums, hotels, restaurants, water parks, ferris wheels. Not a very pretty sight. We're not there yet, but we need to consider the aesthetics, not just the economic value of somebody's proposal to build a home that exceeds the footprint of what was originally intended to be. We're no longer a little summer cottage community. I recognize that, but we need to be sure that we maintain the nature of what we are. Every lot on the waterfront can't sustain a 40,000 more square foot house. It's just, it just doesn't work aesthetically. Sure, you can put it there, but what have we gained? How have we improved the entire community, not just the life of one individual or one family? We have to consider the entire community when we make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch, do you have any comments?
So there's an old Connecticut Supreme Court case that says there's no God-given right to a water view. And the gentleman and his wife who came up and spoke, they live on Warren Street, that is across the salt marsh all the way up the hill, it's probably some 3,000 or 4,000 feet away from this property. The two most impacted people, as I said to you, Gina Battalamenti and the Lombards on either side of the house have indicated that they have no problem with this. And with a 230-foot wide, I mean, a 230-foot-long piece of property, a longer, skinnier house, a much less aesthetic house could be built. A house that would infringe upon east or west views of the adjacent neighbors. So I think I'm just asking you to keep in mind, who are the most impacted individuals by this application? I will also note that the woman had indicated that she's from the board of the Bayview Improvement Association. There's no resolution that she came before you with tonight, no authorization to speak on behalf of the Bayview Association. Again, there's case law that indicates that that should be discounted right then and there. So she and her husband are here speaking as individuals. They are not authorized speakers on behalf of the Bayview Improvement Association. So I would just ask you to consider the arguments that I made to you, the hardship that I claimed to you, and see that this is a reasonable house that's built in conformity with the neighborhood, and approve the application. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Just the ones.
Sharon Jocelyn, again, I'm responding to the comments. I live on 7 Warren Street. That's two houses off Bay Shore Drive, and it's right on the Green. I spoke to the board association member, and I did not speak without them letting me use their names tonight. But I am concerned because, the board is concerned, because it's every foot you take away from the land is a problem, or take away from a balcony. I have a three-story 1919 home, and it's being obstructed by the Lombard house, by the next house, and somebody else across the street from where... They only had the approval letters of the people on either side, who don't really want to look at them, because they're going to build windows and walls. They only look at the water. So please, take my considerations to thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Soto.
Ma'am, I have a question for you. Couple of questions. Do you have anything in writing from the board?
No, I don't.
Okay. And you also mentioned that somebody put a side porch on, and you said the number, what did you say that address was on Bay Shore Drive? Was it 38?
Uh, yes, the first.
Okay, so this is number 24.
Right.
How many houses down from the porch from 38 is this? How many houses away?
Four. It's four.
Four. So this house will not block your view, correct?
This new house doesn't block my direct view to the water, but it could...
Okay.
I'm here to speak.
But the other neighbors aren't here?
Correct.
There's no neighbors across the street here?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't want to belabor this. One last point is, the woman just described where she lives. She lives across from the Green. Her house is across from the beach. She probably has a quarter of a mile of an unobstructed water view right across from her house. So I just want that noted for the record.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this hearing is closed. Mr. Soto.
I move to approve, oh wait, 24 Bay Shore Drive, I move to approve the request to vary section 3.1.4. Well, I move to approve the request with the following modifications, that the east and west balconies project 18 inches and the roof overhang match that with the gutter. Vary section 3.1.4, 01, west side yard setback to 5.2 feet where 10 feet required, 4.1.4, west projection to 2.5 feet where eight feet permitted. I guess these measurements have to change, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, how do you want me to word that? Where eight feet permitted, east projection at 2.5 feet, where eight feet permitted to build new single-family home, survey by J. Co-Despoty, revised 111224. So my question is...
With the condition?
The condition would override those measurements.
That that west projection and the east projection are reduced from 24 inches to 18 inches?
18 inches, okay.
Adjusting the...
They'll adjust everything from there.
The statement accordingly.
Okay. And should we put anything about Stephen reviewing the height?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I don't really have a problem with it, because they're moving those balconies in, and they're taking care of the roof projection, so as long as they're moving that in, I'm happy.
Anyone else? Yeah.
Also, they're keeping the, they're keeping it down to what, 58% or 65% for lot coverage? Is that correct? So...
I'm sorry, what's that?
The lot coverage, they're at 58%, is that right? Is that what I saw?
That's correct.
And they're allowed 65, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there were a lot of, there were a lot of issues brought up tonight. I understand neighborhood reaction to a proposal like this, but we are only talking about three variance requests here. The balconies, two separate variance requests for the balconies, which we've already reduced. And then the side yard setback to 5.2 where 10 required. It's a little bit big to the neighbor's point, but it is a narrow lot. The size is, the height is going to be conforming, the square footage, you know, is what it is. Those are not things that we have direct control, those are not things that are on the table tonight. So like it or hate it, it's not, you know, that's personal preference. So, to a vote then. Mr. King?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Montano?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Any new business? New business, old business? Do we have any applications for next month?
No, no, and I don't know.
No, no, and you don't know.
It's too early. We always expect applications at the last minute.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the minutes from the November hearing.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I just want to say, at the end of our year, thank you all so much for your service to this board. It is a great board. We do important work. I am so thankful for all of your time that you lend to the city, and it's wonderful working with you all. Happy holidays. Thank you for a wonderful year for me as chair. It's been a pleasure.
And let me just say, too, that, Sarah, you've done an excellent job as chairing this board. I think you've done fantastic. You had big shoes to fill, and you filled the mattoil for sure. Fantastic job.
Thanks, Andy, I appreciate that.
And I've got to chime in. You guys have trained yourselves like rock stars. You've done a great job. You are all completely trained. Per the requirement of the state legislature.
All right, 100% participation. I love that. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
See you all at Citrus.